At this time, please silence all your electronics. I'm digging for mine to silence it. And mute your microphones if you're home. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, Honorable Commission, Chaplain Anthony Scheit, Pasco County Fire Rescue. It's my privilege to give the invocation today. Let us pray. Almighty God, thank you for this, our civic duty today. Grant us wisdom in all we do. We ask that you'll watch over our policemen, firemen, first responders, teachers, and youth of our community. Grant us blessing today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, can we please call the roll?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Wegman.
Present.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Here. Okay, now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda, item coming before the board, and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated, and a green light will be shown on the podium. After two minutes, a yellow light will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, a red light will be displayed. Three beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. And Madam Clerk, do we have any... Mr. Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Diane Redmond.
Good morning. I'm Diane Redmond, former... well, maiden name Prater. I live at 38944 Sparkler Road, Dade City. I am a lifetime resident. I was born in Dr. Stanfield's clinic. I also have family members, founding fathers, on the medallions out here for the McKendries and the Tuckers. My dad is also on the memorial. So, I've got skin in the game. I'm here to ask you to please consider this. I know a lot of people are talking about tearing down the tree, and I've got another concern. I live on River... River Road, and I found out that trees, large trees, that are cut down, that the roots literally will destroy the structure of if... Sorry, I'm nervous. I've never done this before. The tree, the roots, you can tell how far the roots go out by the canopy. And so, this tree out here that everybody's talking about wanting to remove, I don't agree with it because my dad, like I said, my dad's name there, and also Mr. Oakley's close there. Anyway, so, I live on River Road, and if anybody knows anything about River Road, there was a large tree taken down there by the church, and it was probably 60-plus years ago. And to this day, you go over the road, you know exactly where it is. No matter how many times they repair it, the area just... you just dip. You just dip. And they've been out there multiple, multiple times. And I say, this is at least 60 years ago. And what my concern is, that you take down the tree, those roots are all up underneath there. And all I can see is it's going to... the structure is gonna... it's gonna fail as far as the underground structure of this, of this, you know, of our memorial. And that's, I guess you could say, that's my really big concern because I've seen it happen. Like I said, drive out River Road and see if I'm not telling the truth. Go right on there. But anyway, so, I'm here a long ti... like I said, I was born here, and my mother was born out there. But we're... we are natives. Can't get... I mean, Dr. Stanfield's clinic by the post office. I just asked, please, please consider the other part of it, that it could literally do exactly what you don't want to do, is damage the structure instead of saving it. I would appreciate that if you would consider that. Thank you.
We don't allow clapping. We don't allow clapping in here, so thank you very much.
Kevin Taggart.
Good morning. Hi, Pasco. I've got a...
Name and address for the record.
My name is Kevin Taggart. I'm right here in Dade City, 13833 Fifth Street. I've got about 20 members, and if I can kind of consolidate and wrap things up a little quicker, if I could have a little extension on time.
Well, are you speaking for all of them?
Could everyone stand up representing our tree today?
Okay, so if those folks aren't gonna speak, then we'll give you more time.
I talked to them before, so they wouldn't sign up to do that, so I'd appreciate that.
We have three more signed.
Okay, then we'll...
Okay, I was unaware of that. I just was able to just...
We'll give you five minutes.
Okay. Put my readers on. Good morning, Commissioners. As I said, my name's Kevin Taggart. I voted for you guys on this board. I don't have any personal problems. I have seen some attacks against some of you members, and that I did not organize a protest. I did organize a peaceful gathering, and most of those people are here today. So, I just want to let you guys know that. And I appreciate you guys for taking the emails and calls, and anybody that's personally reached back out to me. Today, we're gonna regis... we're requesting that the county board register Live Oak Number Seven right here in the courthouse lawn as a historic live oak tree to be registered. Sits on the north lawn for over 200 to 250 years, is what our arborist report are saying. This tree has been through numerous historical events, including Seminole Indian Wars, Civil War, world wars, and even generations of families, as we heard. Francis Dade in 1835 marched his men just about a mile from here on their way to Fort King, on the road to Fort King up to the fort before the Dade City massacre happened. A 250-year-old tree, this means this tree has lived under Great Britain, it's lived under Spain, and now the United States. This tree never moved its roots. It's been in the same exact location. When the Declaration of Independence was signed, the tree may be from 1773, predates 1776, when our Declaration of Independence was signed. With proper care, this tree can last centuries more. It's been through centuries of hurricanes, major storms, droughts, floods, human threats. Thankfully, Commissioner Sylvia Young, Pasco Commissioner, whose name's on this building, she was instrumental in saving that tree and was able to convince the county to turn their vote around to save the tree. However, the tree was never registered historically, and we hope that that can be done. The arborist reports from 2015 and 2025 do not recommend tree removal. They do not. It does issue that there's... the 2015 does list issues with the tree, but maintains ISA certified arborist follow-up. So, we got two reports supporting that the tree does not need to come down. There's no visible... the tree is lush and green. There's no visible failing of the tree, as mentioned in previous reports. And I'm afraid that maybe a lot on the county, there might have been some information passed around, but we want to definitely share some facts, and we invite you to look at the tree after today's meeting and just walk around it. As for sable palms, there's no public support for the sable palms on this landscape. Dade City, Pasco County, is tree city, and sable palms do not match this inland landscape. Sable palms technically aren't even trees, even though they're our state tree. It's actual grass. Old Number Seven is claimed to be a threat to our memorial bandstand. We have lots of veterans, but we have family members. We had three out there last meeting that stood up for that tree, and they sit in the shade when they honor their family members at the bandstand. It is near and dear, and I know Commissioner Oakley does have family on there. And we don't... we don't want to see any of these memorials destroyed. That tree should be a memorial. Again, the arborist report, you can see that the tree is trimmed around the bandstand, and the major limbs would not fall directly if they did snap, as mentioned previously. But we... currently, there is a low threat. This tree, we should have funds already to save our memorials, especially this tree. If funds aren't already set aside to help preserve the bandstand, we need to. If you notice, the police memorial already had one of the plaques fall off, and the blue grass tiles, the little blue strip for the thin blue line, is starting to come undone, and all those little blue chips are spread it up. So, we should have money to fix these memorials, hopefully. And we need that bandstand also protected. Someone could drive their car into it, you know, where a sable palm, if planted there, could also fall on it. We just need to be ready. This tree cleans our air, produces oxygen, provides shade, shelter for wildlife. This mature tree can produce about 275 liters of oxygen. It will make 25 million liters of oxygen, and it's 250 years, and she's not even halfway done with her life. Please register Oak Number Seven on a historic... as a historic tree as soon as possible. Let's stop and protect this tree. Halt the plan to cut it down, and let's stop the current sable palm plan, please. Let's just leave everything else as for right now. Dade City should have a seat at this table on the landscape designs. Let us save the tree, preserve our history, future. Can I get a motion?
We don't do that.
Had to ask. I do appreciate you guys. And I am not personally... again, I know it's a very heated thing when it comes to a tree. I know Mr. Oakley's taking a lot of heat. It's... we have to find some kind of desire, but I have yet to run to anybody that wants this tree removed.
All right, thank you. Next?
Barbara Barthel.
Morning.
Morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for letting me speak.
You can move that mic down.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Barbara Barthel. I'm a fourth-generation Pasco County, born and raised here. A lot of you may know me or have seen me before because I've spoke before, the commissioners before, in different capacities. The reason I am speaking today is to let you know that I have obtained the forms to actually request that the tree be considered or maintained as a historic landmark, and I will be filling them out. I actually obtained those forms late yesterday afternoon, and I will be talking to the city of Dade City and also asking them to make it a historic landmark through the city of Dade City. So, I'll ask for them to do that with them first, since it is in the city of Dade City, and then actually put that through the planning commission with the Pasco County Board second, because that's what they have requested for me to do. So, I have all of those forms to do that and request that the tree be made a historic landmark as the tree. So, I just wanted to make you aware that I will be filling out those forms to make the tree because the tree has been there forever, and nothing has ever happened there. You know, I've raised my children here, and then I was raised here. There's been, you know, cupcakes sold, and I remember when I took my children before the memorial was, you know, closed off, and Santa Claus used to sit inside of it, and you would take pictures of your children, you know, going and seeing Santa Claus. And now, of course, you can't do that because the memorial needs to have a lot of work done to it. And I know that the people that are here to support the tree would support helping to get monies to fix that memorial. So, you know, we'll start one thing at a time, to save one thing at a time, and we'd be glad to help, you know, save the memorial and get funds to, you know, do that memorial. But we need to save that tree because that means a lot to Dade City, and it's a representation of who we are in Pasco County, Dade City. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Barbara, could you add your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 31252 St. Joe Road.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Connie Lamarcia. Could you give us your address for the record?
Sure. It's 37330 Hickory Hill Lane, Dade City. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and obviously, I am here in support of saving the tree and making it historic landmark. I will not reiterate the things that you've already heard, but I will tell you that when I moved here 40 years ago, I was in awe of the beauty of this city. I was in awe of all of the land around this city. It was inspiring. And I just want to say that I think people have spoken to the environmental and historical significance of the tree. I want to speak to the spirit of the tree and the way in which it truly reflects the identity of Dade City. And indeed, I think all of Pasco County, it is native to us. And what I'm really hoping for is that you will move forward on the historic plan, and I really want to see the county and the city work together to preserve this tree and bring unity to the community. And thank you very much.
Kevin Menard. Karen, I'm sorry. Karen Menard. Your address for the record, please.
My address is 17147 Sweetwater Road. I'm Karen Menard, and I come before you today, and I appreciate your time as a member of the Dade City Garden Club. And with regards to the tree, I understand the roles that the state, the county, and the city have with regards to the trees. Trees in the state of Florida are protected, and live oaks, especially grand live oaks, are part of that protection. With regards to the county, the county would be responsible for designate... getting the designation for that tree as a historical tree. With regards to removing the tree, it's the city's responsibility to approve that permit. Any trees that are within the city limits need to get the permit from the city. Within the city's municipal code, it specifically states that any tree that exceeds 40 inches in diameter at breast height cannot be removed, especially if the tree has been deemed healthy and well-cared-for. Dade City does have the designation as a Tree City USA. It's maintained that designation for 18 years. Part of that designation requires that the city have a tree board, they have a tree care ordinance, they have the money to take care of the trees, and that they have an Arbor Day observation, observation, and a proclamation. And we do all those things. And I'd like to encourage the county to uphold that program's goals and save that tree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the last person we have signed up, and we have no one online.
Right. So, we've heard from the tree folks. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on a different topic here today? Okay, and there's no... someone raised their hand? Someone raised their hand? Okay. No, she's leaving. All right, then that will end public comment. And so we don't address public comment at this time. We'll talk about the tree during our commissioner items, which will happen probably in a little bit. But we have some other business to get through and you're welcome to stay while we go through our regular business. I think at this time, I have a special, special thing happening. Can we call up Paula, please? Who's handling this award? Oh, you're going to speak about the award. Okay. Okay, Paula Baracaldo is going to talk about our, our HSA award.
So, good morning, commissioners. It is my pleasure to share with you that Pasco County, through the funds provided by the opioid settlement fund, has been recognized at both the state and national level for its efforts to address behavioral health needs for our community. First, through the state level, the Florida Association of Counties Health Services Administrators under their innovation award category. And second, through the National Association of Counties through their health services. This is a highlight for the groundbreaking partnership that we have established with BayCare and the efforts that have been made to fill this gap in the continuum of services that are being provided to our community. So this morning, I would like to also highlight two professionals that have been the heartbeat of this effort. We have with us Tracy Kaylee. She is the Director of Clinical Operations at BayCare, together with Erica Fritz, who is the manager for the Urgent Care Center. And so with that, I'd like to bring them up here so they can share with you about the importance of this project and the positive impact that it has had in our community.
Thank you, guys. Hello, nice to see everyone. So, most of you know, we opened the first behavioral health urgent care center in the state of Florida here in Pasco County. And that was no easy task. And I think it happened because of the forward thinking and the generosity of this commission, along with our community, our community of professionals, our hospitals, our providers, our business community. Everyone saw a need for easy, immediate access for mental health and addiction treatment. And that's what we created. Same day, walk-in, extended hours. So, striking while the iron's hot, so to speak. We've been open for almost six months. We have this incredible, most, some of you have seen it, some of you have not. If you'd like to come visit, please do. The environment's beautiful. It's welcoming, it's peaceful, it's serene. We don't rush people through. We have a comfort room where people can kind of take a minute, take a break. We really want our professionals to meet with anyone who walks in to really figure out, what do they need? What do they need today? And then what do they need for the next week, the next month, the next six months? And how do we check in and keep them connected to services? So, in the almost six months that we've been operational, we have served almost 800 individuals.
Wow.
800 people have walked in, no appointments. You walk in for services, you're asking for mental health and addiction care today and you're getting it. Of those 800, 96% of them have been diverted from hospital care. Meaning, we're not having to Baker Act that more, not having to send them to detox. We're getting them, and those services are needed. There are, there is an appropriate time and place for involuntary services. But if we can get them the treatment, the right treatment at the right time and avoid that more costly service, not necessarily treatment-oriented service, that is essential. So, I'm really proud of our work. I feel very grateful to have partnered with you guys. I will say, we are getting questions from all over the state of Florida saying, can we come visit? Can we come replicate this? How do we do it? You know, and we're opening the playbook, right? We want to see more of this. It doesn't have to be us doing it. We would love to see others do it in our nearby counties and also throughout the state. So, thank you very much.
I want to, I want to write down those numbers.
What item is this, Ms. Jer?
This is a, this is a walk-on.
Oh, walk-on.
Okay, so in six months?
Yep, so we opened beginning of February, so it's been almost six months. We've served just about 800 individuals to date. These are adults walking in for mental health and addiction care. And of those 800, 96% of them have been diverted from any hospitalization, detox, you know, urgent care, you know, more intensive level of care.
And maybe the jail as well.
For sure, yeah, yep.
That's one.
And we've worked very closely with the jail. You know, when, when inmates are being released, they can come, right? They can come that next day or the day of, they can, you know, they can walk in for services. So it's, I think the community sees it as a, as a great resource in our county. And, you know, we're all working together really well and have been for a while, so.
Excellent. Does anyone else want to address this group project? I'll start here and then move that way.
Question. Does this program have any transportation barriers? If you have 800 and I figure folks who are in these situations, transportation's probably an issue. So, I was curious if there was any, any transportation barriers or any, as this program evolved, I mean, six months, 800 people, that's pretty significant. So as we move forward to the next phase of, of the project, if there's anything?
Is there a bus stop there?
We are, we are on a bus stop route. And we haven't really seen a lot of transportation issues. We have law enforcement that are willing to bring individuals. And you know, it, what often is happening, what we're seeing happening is it's, it's today's the day and they find a friend to take them in, or spouses bringing them in. And I, and I will say, we're seeing all walks of life, right? So this is, this is those that are uninsured, homeless, needing like all kinds of services wrapped around them. And this is, you know, our working community that says, you know what? I've, I used to struggle with some addiction and I feel like I need to get back in. Or I'm, or I'm struggling with a grief-related issue and I really just need to talk to someone. I think, let me just go in there and see what they, they have to offer. So we have seen kind of the whole gamut. And I think, you know, when we just, this, we came up with this concept, you know, we strategically picked the location because it is on a bus stop route. It is Medicaid will, will transport with their, their cabs there. You know, Uber Health brings people there. So we, you know, picked a location that we felt like would be most advantageous for those that need it.
All right, great job.
Yep.
So, first of all, great job. And second of all, I absolutely love your program. You know, you think of those 800 people, how many of those 800 people, you know, people I've talked to that they're afraid to go get help because they don't want that Baker Act on, on their, on their record? And you can't even put a number of how many people you guys really have rescued and probably prevented from being homeless and losing their jobs. And I just think it's, it's so much bigger than that. And thank you guys for, for everything. And it's very important what you guys do, so.
Thank you.
And hopefully, other counties will take our lead and open up one as well.
Absolutely.
Because it's truly life-changing.
Thank you.
I want to say what a phenomenal accomplishment it is to be the first, number one. But number two, how great you guys renovated that building to make it work. It was just outstanding to walk in there. So, top, top, top-rated premier, great job with that. You know, with our homeless populations out there that these guys have to pick up, the deputies have to do it, firefighters have the same type of issue, EMS, et cetera. So all those calls matter. And having now an outlet to go to take them right away is important. You know, I hear, I see a lot of, you know, panhandling going on with the signs, et cetera. Yesterday, I saw a guy walking on Little Road, walking up and down in the middle of the median with just a sandal. And he was just like going up and down and up and down. That's, I don't know if he got picked up or not. I know I let staff know, so I think they did, they probably did something with that. But having an opportunity to take someone keeps them out of the jails, keeps them out of the hospitals, which we all pay for at the end, and gives them a chance to get back into life. So, thank you for the great work you're doing.
Thank you.
So, we have to give a lot of credit to your former CEO, Tommy. I never remember his last name.
Enzina.
Yes. And because we generated this idea at the convening that he did of leaders and from the three or four counties. So I want to make sure that, since he's not there anymore, that he knows the seed he planted. So please be sure and tell him thanks for me and I'm sure the sheriff because we were at our, our table where the seeds started. That if not for him bringing that together, who knows, you know, if this would have germinated like it did.
Absolutely.
Very grateful to him, that was brilliant. He had all the hospitals there, not just BayCare. And, and great job for our staff, your staff, the community. And this is a really good use of opioid settlement money. And I'm very happy that our citizens have this opportunity. I wonder, maybe one day we need to think, do we need one on this side?
Maybe there's a proposal that's in right now.
There is? Okay. County's so big and, you know, we want all of our citizens to have, have this opportunity.
We agree. And we, and we hear the same thing about the services. You know, it is, it is in West Pasco currently. And so, you know, it, it is a, BayCare did put in a proposal to expand access to East Pasco. And it was recommended at last week's task force meeting to push forward to, it'll come before you guys next month. So, yeah, we would love to see it expand.
Is that on our CDBG list today? Did I miss that in my meeting yesterday?
We're actually starting briefings with you individually next week. And then that will come to you in September for formal recommendation.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much.
Would it be possible to take a picture?
Yes, let's, board members, let's go down. We should send this to the NACO newsletter. With a little story. Task for PIO. You know, I was there. I couldn't, couldn't come to the lunch. I didn't, I didn't.
Keith, have a look at me, please. Thank you so much.
Very nice. Okay, so we are on to the agenda. And I have some polls here.
You've got resolutions.
Oh, I always get them. Okay. We will go on to our resolutions, but then we will do the agenda. Go ahead, Mr. Kirk.
Resolution number 25299. Gentlemen, if you would, please stand for the premier lead. If you would come and join up at the podium. And let me, before I go any further, apologize for any mispronunciation of names in the next few minutes, okay? A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, congratulating the 2009 Florida Premier FC Boys Team on winning a national championship. Whereas the West Pasco Soccer Association was formed in 1979 as a neighborhood soccer program and since then, has grown into Florida Premier, a national powerhouse recognized as one of the top youth clubs in the country. And whereas in 2020, Florida Premier was accepted into the Elite Clubs National League, ECNL, the top youth soccer league in the United States with over 165 clubs that compete throughout the season for one of 64 playoff spots. And whereas, after qualifying for playoffs held in Seattle, Washington, Florida Premier was able to win and advance to the Sweet 16, where they faced past national champion, San Diego Sur, eventually advancing to the Elite Eight. And whereas, after a 10-month grueling season, the 2009 Florida Premier Boys traveled to Richmond, Virginia and started out with a tough match against Solar, winning 4-2. In the final four, Florida Premier faced North Carolina FC and came out with a 2-0 win to secure their spot in the first-ever national championship game for the club. And whereas, in the final, Florida Premier FC Boys faced Predators from Southern California and dominated the game with a 3-0 win, making them the 2025 U-16 ECNL national champions. And whereas, the 2009 Florida Premier Boys roster is comprised of players Ibrahim Abdal Salam, Sebastian Aguilar, David Baugh, Daniel Barros, Taylor Bennett, Arturo Cronnabol, Bobo Day, Drew Delaney, Tomas Garcia, Gabriel Gautier, Alton Marotti, William Shipe, Solomon Nakitia, Evan Serrano, Zachary Singer, Dylan Starkey, Furios Vasikas,
Noelis.
Khalil Simon, Sayani Albardo, Hoqueen Bell Carcel, Brian Cruz Hernandez, and Enzio Martino. And whereas, the 2009 Florida Premier FC ECNL Boys Team is staffed by Eddie Ababo as the head coach, Andre Arango as the assistant coach, Novi Markic, I'm sorry, as chief executive officer, Nathan Bender as the director of soccer, Denise Stauffer as director of operations, and Billy Bennett as the team admin. And whereas, this marks the first time in Florida history that any boys or girls Elite Clubs National League team has won the national championship, as well as the first national championship in Florida Premier history. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, said board hereby congratulates the 2009 Florida Premier FC Boys Team on winning the U-16 ECNL national championship. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present, voting this fifth day of August, 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
You want to say a few words?
What?
You want to say any words to the team? Yeah, I'm going to start there and go that way.
Great job, guys. I mean, how'd you do it?
Lots of hard work.
I'm sure you did a lot of work, a lot of exercise and a lot of joy in winning games. What was your record? Did you win every game you had the entire year? I know you've won a lot of them.
Come on up to the podium. You can come up to the podium.
Who's the speaker?
Who's the speaker?
Who's the speaker here?
Novi.
Novi.
There you go. He's coming forward.
All right, good morning, guys. First of all, guys, I would like to thank our amazing county commissioners who've been supporting youth sports in Pasco County all these years. Also, our Parks and Rec Department, Keith Wiley, Brian Taylor. Without them, guys, we do not have facilities to play on. So they played a huge part in this national championship. Florida Sports Coast, Adam Thomas, Consuelo Sanchez, amazing partners. I always say, you need a great team to win and great teamwork. And without all of you guys' support, none of this is possible. Looking back five years ago, I mean, we never dreamt of being here. But like we tell the boys, and this is a message to you guys, guys, with a lot of hard work and persistence, everything in life is possible. And don't let anyone tell you it's not possible. To me, what I'm most proud of, that the first-ever championship in Florida is coming back to Pasco County, not Miami, not Orlando. So, we're super proud. I always say, we're Pasco proud and it's going to continue. This is just the beginning. And super proud of the boys. And again, thanks to all you guys and go Pasco.
That gave me good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for every.
Hang on, Novi, because we're all going to say something.
Thank you for all your hard work. I thank Commissioner Starkey, said it the best one day on a, on a chat I saw. We need more Phils. And we do. And we've been working to have more. And Keith and his team are doing a great job. This board's supporting more and more Phils coming into Pasco to, to make it where everybody can play a sport here in Pasco.
Mr.?
Thank you. You know, it was, phones started ringing, getting texts, pictures started coming in real time, at least to my phone, as y'all are winning. Watching, watching you guys, however you did those slides, it didn't blow an ACL or an MCL when you guys, you guys clinched victory was, was pretty awesome, pretty awesome to watch. And, you know, the history of your program of Florida Premier with Novi and Bocho, now second generation, taking the helm and, and growing the program in the league to what it is today. And the dedication of not just you all, but your parents. Thank your parents. Without your parents, you all wouldn't be able to have these opportunities to play and feel what it's like to have such a victory. And to, to, to know what it's like to bring such a trophy back to your home county and what you represent. You're a future. You represent not just your sport, but all the youth in youth sport and here in Pasco County and represent this board and the legacy that we have here on. board and the legacy that we have here on this Florida Sports Coast. So it was pretty awesome to see sports coach name, Florida Sports Coast on your jerseys, and just couldn't be more proud and happy for you all and your families. And I tell you, what a great way to kick off a new school year. So, congrats, guys.
Commissioner Yeager.
Well, congratulations, and hard work pays off, boys. You guys all are a special group of boys. You are truly, you're athletic. You have probably bonded over this experience, right? Like you guys can't get any closer as a team and friendships and just your athleticism, and this is gonna stay with you forever, right? And I just want to share with you a quick story. My son's team at A U, they won the International World Series, right, at A U. Well, that group of boys, almost every single one of them is playing sports in college. So you guys keep working hard and keep pushing, keep practicing, keep challenging yourself to do better, set goals, and I bet you, almost all of you will play sports in college. So congratulations, and I think it's Pasco Proud is perfectly said. So congratulations, guys. Great job.
Mr. Mariano.
Yeah, congratulations, guys. What a phenomenal accomplishment. And I think Commissioner Yeager says it just right. You guys are gonna be friends forever now. You're gonna have something in common. That was just a great achievement. And it's gonna lead to great things in the future. The more you see, whether it's school, sports, it all ties in to make a better life yourself. And as one of the, one of our representatives, Representative Steele, he likes to say, and I heard him say this publicly once, it was really good, "The harder you work now, the easier life gets as you go on in life." And I think what you're gonna do is you're gonna be able to reap these benefits to know what it's like to win, how important it is, what a great feeling. That's right, the last game must have been something else. Going up 1-0, then 2, then 3, knowing you're pretty well locked in. Gotta be just an awesome feeling to get treasure as you go through that thing. Instead of a last-second victory, just like being able to cherish the moment, the travel, the dream all the way through. So congratulations with it. And Novi, thank you for what you're doing, these young men. You are leading, leaders in the future. I'm a big believer in sports. The less, the more sports you play, the less probably you get otherwise, right? And just the life lessons you are teaching these young men and all your, all your teams, thank you so much for what you do. You make Pasco a great place, a premier place. So congratulations.
So, we're gonna have to have a discussion, because I didn't get any live update text. I'm probably the only licensed U-8 soccer coach sitting up here. But to my fellow commissioner's point, you know, hard work pays off. My daughter, Lindsay, went to River Ridge and was fifth ranked in the state and ended up playing soccer at the Air Force Academy. She could have played either at the Naval Academy or the Air Force Academy. She went and played soccer at the Air Force Academy, and her now husband was also playing soccer at the Air Force Academy, and he was on the U-18 National Team. So soccer's very much ingrained in our family, as many other sports, but certainly we have a love for soccer, and I'm just so proud of you guys and the organization, and it's just first-class, and we're just, I don't know, I can't even say it, we're just so proud of you. And I put a little note here, you need to have a float in the upcoming parade. So that's something you're, that your league needs to think about, is decorating a float, making sure that you have a banner, and all these boys are on it down in Newport Richie, right? Right? The Chasco. Okay, so, board members, you want to stay up here or you want to go down? Yeah, come on down. We're gonna take a photo. And I have something for all of guys. These are called challenge points.
I saw this cord drawn down, but I didn't know.
All right. We're gonna take a picture with the players, and then the parents can come up after. Can you fit us off?
All right, boys, attempt. Trying, yes. I think I can. All right, everyone look at me a few times.
Now, our parents.
One more, one more paper.
Don't send your picture.
One more picture.
Any other parents? One second, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have an add-on recognition. All right. Tell them what you did.
I got top 10 in my age group.
Hey, what?
He got top 10 in his age group. For what?
Nationals.
Nationals for what sport?
Triathlon.
In a triathlon.
Wow!
My kids use. Okay, what, we have another resolution? It's rest two. Mr. Mariano. Joanne, I won't pull that one.
I could, I could use my best Harold sample voice and start reading.
Yeah, go ahead. Start reading.
Madam Chair, before we proceed, just for clarification, for the benefit of those in the audience, because as I was preparing to read that resolution, I'm going, 2009?
Yeah.
Just to help you all understand, they were all born in 2009. So U-16 is the age group.
Yeah.
And boy, do I feel old. Resolution number 25303, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County proclaiming August 8, 2025, excuse me, as LifeLink Infinity Day in Pasco County.
Madam Chair, is someone from LifeLink here?
Can't you tell?
Whereas organ, eye, and tissue donations provide an extraordinary, extraordinary opportunity to save and improve lives while offering the chance for donors to leave a lasting impact. And whereas in the state of Florida, more than 11 million individuals have already decided to leave a legacy of life by registering their decision to become organ donors through Florida's Organ and Tissue Organ Registry. And whereas currently, there are more than 105,000 individuals nationwide, including more than 5,600 in Florida, who desperately await life-saving organ transplants. And whereas just one organ, tissue, and eye donor can save the lives of up to eight individuals and improve the lives of dozens more, symbolizing an invaluable altruistic act of service that will profoundly impact each recipient, bringing a renewed quality of life and joy to them and their loved ones. And whereas the number eight symbolizes the countless lives a single donor can save while also reflecting the infinity symbol, highlighting the enduring impact and the stories that live on through organ donation. And whereas everyone has the potential to leave a lasting legacy through organ, tissue, and eye donation regardless of age, race, or medical history, and should be applauded for their decision. And whereas LifeLink Infinity Day honors the infinite impact of organ donation and the enduring legacies of selfless donors who continue to save and enrich lives. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby proclaims August 8, 2025, as LifeLink Infinity Day in Pasco County, and encourages all residents to learn more about organ donation and considering registering as donors through Florida's Organ and Tissue Donor Registry. Done a result in regular session with the quorum present voting this 5th day of August 2025.
Move approval?
I'll take a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Commissioner Mariano.
All right. Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think the awareness is very important. It highlights some really good points about how valuable it is and how much it can actually affect some other families down the road. So we greatly appreciate you bringing this forward for us.
Thank you. And if I may say a few words, is that okay? I wanted to thank you for recognizing August 8 as LifeLink Infinity Day in Pasco County. This year marks the first anniversary of LifeLink Infinity Campaign, and your support helps shine a light on the power of donation and community action. In my role, I'm going a little off-script. I'm the volunteer and community relations coordinator, so I work with both donor families and those who have received organ, eye, and tissue transplantations as well. So I've seen both sides, and I understand the impact. And then just to reiterate, one organ donor can save up to eight lives. One tissue donor can save up to more than 75 lives. Actually, I think one of our highest donors is over 800 impacted. And then a cornea or eye donor can help restore sight to two people. So thank you so much for your recognition.
Okay, we didn't call for the vote?
No, we did.
I thought we did. Did they say?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah. Um, you know, I have that on my card as an organ donor, and I think, you know, it's personal preference, but I wish everybody did, so.
I actually didn't put that on my card, because I'm planning on using all my organs. I don't think there are gonna be any-
When you're gone?
I keep, well, I turned 80, so I'm wearing them out. So I'm not sure they'll be any good for anybody else, but I think it's a great program.
Yeah.
And I know it, one human being doing that saves many lives, not just another life, but of different organs they can use that will help many, many people. So, very, very proud of doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Wade.
Yes, you know, the speed in which you guys have to move whenever there's an opportunity to collect organs and the technology and the teams that move into place so quickly to save, to save someone, is just always impressive to watch when you see the documentaries on TV or news shows and all the, all the different logistics that go into place whenever that situation arises. So, you know, thank you guys for honing in on your science and giving folks a second chance. And to those who, who, you know, who've, you know, who've made the decision to donate their organs, and it's a special time for them and their families. And so, thank you to all those who make that decision.
Thank you.
So I don't know if any of you have ever watched an honor walk, but basically that's when someone's an organ donor and they're on life support, and they take them around the lab in the hospital. And I can't even watch one of those just, just without crying. You know, the sacrifice of that family and just also all the people that person is gonna help. Me and my husband and all my children were organ donors, and I actually took my grandpa's lead, because he was an organ donor and somebody has his eyes. So-
See?
Yeah, so it's actually, it's a beautiful thing. So, thank you very much for what you guys do, and I'm so happy that, Jeff, you guys brought this resolution.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did not cast a correlation of 8-8. So, that's, that had to be explained to me. Okay, you have the- Okay. It's 11:15 or whatever.
11:15.
Um, we can do our consent agenda, or we can pull up our 11:15. What's your question?
I'm good with getting 11:15 done.
Okay. Bill, we'll go ahead before you are.
Good morning, and happy Tuesday, everyone. It's a great day in Pasco County. I'm Bill Cronin. I'm the president and CEO of the Pasco EDC. I also like trees. I'm a former U-8 soccer coach and an organ donor, so.
U-8, yeah.
You had me following some really great representation of our community today, and I wish the soccer folks were still here, because I bet you that there's gonna be a business that actually moves here because of the fact that we've got such great recreational youth sports, and somebody's, some decision-maker of some factory or some business is gonna move here because of how we treat our people and our families. So, talk about putting the premier in a premier county. I don't know if y'all caught that with the name, but I'm here today to present our third quarter report from the Pasco EDC, both for the MOU and for our Penny for Pasco agreement with the county. And just starting out on our starting slide for our board retreat this year, usually we go scalloping, but it's always up to our chair of what they want to do, and this year they decided they want to pay back the community. So we all spent time at Metropolitan Ministries, had a really successful day, and I would encourage any of our audience or businesses, consider doing these days of service. It's not just a team-building event, but also means a lot to the people that we serve, and especially when they see you guys out doing it. Good news, we've got a fifth, out of the 16, goal for 16 wins, we've got 15 so far. One of the things that we're noticing, though, is that a lower job count for almost every type of company coming in right now. And we're seeing this not just in Pasco County, but nationwide. Companies, company's goal is not to hire more people. Company's goals are to make more money. And we see more and more investment in things like machinery and AI and things like that, in less jobs. So, we're gonna be taking a hard look at those target industries to make sure that we're still getting the right types of jobs for the right people. But even, even so, we're still at 437 jobs already this year into our third quarter, and $101 million of new capital investment into the county.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, Bill, on your, on your jobs, we count the physical hard body-
So, Bill, on your, on your jobs, we count the physical hard bodies here. We don't count remote employment opportunities.
Right. And we don't count the multiplier. So these are direct jobs that the company has agreed to, full-time jobs, that they've agreed to hire. So anything that's remote, anything that's part-time, none of those count. And then also the multiplier effect, we don't count those either. So these are just direct jobs.
Would there be a way to, when we look at the job count, to incentivize or if maybe we already do have the conversation of if you have a remote worker, use Pasco-based remote workforce? Is that part of the conversation?
It's, it's not, but it's something we watch really carefully because if there's enough of those remote workers here, eventually somebody's going to move a facility here and take advantage of having those remote workers here. It is a big deal for us, though, because if you remember after COVID, we were the second most popular place in the, in the state for work from home because of our quality of life. So the more of that talent that moves here, the more attractive it is for another business to come here and build the bricks and mortar facility. And that's what we really want because if they're working from home, it's great, but they can, they can go anywhere. Good question. It's something we watch really closely. And the types of industry. So this, again, still reflects a real heavy focus on advanced manufacturing. Those are the ones that have a lot more multiplier jobs. I think Commissioner Starky really likes this as well, too, because that's, ties in with our trades and our programs like the apprenticeship program and AM Skills. And training, mentioned before, a focus on talent, getting out, working with our existing companies. We still spend about 80% of our time with our existing business, and that's still the best advertisement we have for other businesses to come in, is how you treat your existing business. So training that workforce for existing business, we get to keep them. Company visits and working with them, that is the local business that's already here. 54 visits to those companies and then working with our workforce development partners like AM Skills, Career Source, Workforce Connect, our program. This still seems to be the most important thing for existing business is the workforce. Year-to-date earned media value, $4.93 million. That's where other people talk about us, not us talking about ourselves. So that's good. It's always good when somebody else tells our story. Speaking of which, today, we're going to have an announcement for another company coming in that is a high-tech company. As a matter of fact, it's really cool science that, it's a British company from the UK that we met at Soft Week, and they actually have invented a machine that can lift fingerprints remotely using a camera through windows, on glass. We're working closely with the Sheriff's Department.
Are you allowed to talk about that publicly?
It'll be in the news today, so I'm giving you guys a little glimpse of it.
I mean, that technology, that's crazy.
It's, it's amazing. They can pick it up off mirrors, off phones. And, and what's really important about that is nobody has to disturb the crime scene. You know, they, they can actually just pick it up without touching anything at all and get the fingerprints and several fingerprints. So they're going to be at our incubator in Wesley Chapel and working closely with, first, the forensics unit at the Sheriff's Office. So good foreign direct investment, good tech stuff, and good for the work that we've been doing in defense and special operations forces. They'll have an open house at our incubator next week, so.
So that's our second UK business because we have the one that bought.
So third, third. Yeah, we had, we had another IT company last year, and then we had the purchase of Meopta from G&amp;H, which is another company working in defense using optics, too. So we're well on our way. We're not just the life sciences hub anymore. You're going to start to see a lot more defense. And you'll see a lot more of that in the headlines as well, too. Still looking at the same things, our sites. So in Florida, there's not a lot of places with sites, especially ready sites that are ready to go. That really gets people's attention when they're looking to move down here. And where are they moving from? Still New York, Illinois, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Michigan. As I like to say, only the smart ones are moving down here. We're leaving the rest of them up there. Still good social engagement on our social media, 14,000 followers, but over half of them are actually engaging with us, meaning that they're having conversations and sharing with us and vice versa in social media. And then as far as getting out, working with our other communities, working with the industry, we've attended 21 trade events, five conferences and seminars, and presentation to eight different industry groups and organizations. And it's everything from Rotary to ULI to some of the real estate organizations. The photo there is ourselves with our partners in Hillsborough and Pinellas County. As you know, we work together with Global Tampa Bay, and this is at the FEDC Annual Conference, which last time I was with y'all, I reported that we had won a couple awards at the FEDC.
That rug is the wrong rug for a picture. It's like, yeah.
The what, the rug?
The rug. It's like, it's going up the wall. Another, yeah, they got to fix that rug.
You're right.
Look at it.
Sorry.
It's optical illusion.
It looks like waves.
Yeah.
I think it was, and the hotel was on the water, so I think they were going with the nautical theme. But as far as how we do our private investors, up to 93. Got 180,000 raised so far this year. We've got our big annual awards coming up, and we're back at Saddle Brook. So September 4th, the Thursday after Labor Day, back to Saddle Brook. You remember the days that we had the trade show? Well, the trade show is back. So you'll have an opportunity to meet with those companies. And if you've never exhibited before, we still have some extra spots open for first-time exhibitors at $500, so.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So I just was at a luncheon learn there. I'll tell you, they redone it over. Looks beautiful inside. They did a nice job in there.
Oh, nice.
The, the new owners and all the reno that's been done. Yeah, I think we're the first big event after the complete reno. So Florida Sports Coast had their event earlier this year. Extremely well done. This is going to be something that once again we brag about when it comes to people coming into our community. It's definitely an asset, so. On the Penny for Pasco side, some of the awards that I mentioned that we had at FEDC, we do have IEDC coming up, the International Economic Development Council, and I'm hoping and anticipating that we may see some similar awards for that. Bless you. And of those, of those awards, though, I mentioned that one was for our 3D Sites video of our Ready Sites, which is getting awards but getting lots of looks, pun intended. Also, though, the Co-Starters for Causes, which Co-Starters for Causes, you remember last year, we announced we were going to offer Co-Starters courses to our nonprofits because our nonprofits here weren't able to scale as fast as our growth in the community. So we actually got a recognition award for helping to get our nonprofits up and scaling. And yesterday, we just had our second cohort start with another group of nonprofits, and we sponsored them, but also the Greater Pasco Chamber sponsored a couple of their new members to go through that process. And we've got another group of Co-Starters graduating this week as well, too. So lots of new innovation. Ready Sites continue construction at the Amazon site and at Bauducow. Both of those are vertical. You can see double branch, the whole park is good, is in the process of certification, and that's at 52 and 75. And then we're getting a lot of inquiries still from aviation, defense, our Thousand Acres site out in East Pasco. We've got some very quiet defense companies that are looking at that because they like the nature of having a quiet place, and I think our residents like that as well, too. So 26 inquiries so far. Had a site visit this last week to that larger site. Presentations to the consultants and the developers, 22. International. And I mentioned Soft Week, so that's a special operations forces show formerly known as SOFIC down in Tampa, and that's where the defense firms are selling to the US government. So if you've got a new invention and you want Delta Force or the Navy SEALs to get it, this is where you go to get them to purchase it. We found that a lot of those companies want to be within arm's length to SOCOM and CENTCOM, and that's why we got companies like the one that is announcing today.
So I meant to go, and I just got too busy. I know every other year, it's the big year.
Every other year is a demo, yeah.
Yeah, so next year is the demo year, right?
Yes, yes. So they'll be trying out their toys. You'll see them repelling from buildings, submarines. Well, I guess you don't see the submarines if you're underwater. But that is a good time to go because it's how they, they let the general public enjoy some of that.
So, so I, and I know in our International Economic Development Task Force that Turner is involved with, we have a gentleman who's very involved with this. And he says that, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for us because they want, they want to be here with MacDill, and, but there's running out of places in Hillsborough County.
They're, they're running out of places nationwide to be able to do things like testing some of these new inventions, too. So if you're building, if you're building something at Softworks or JTEF where the, the Iron Man suit was developed, do you remember?
Yeah, my friend worked on that.
You have to go test it somewhere. And we're within range that somebody can get in the car and come up and test. And we're also really good about taking care of our business up here. So we see this as, as a real great opportunity for Pasco County going forward.
Yep.
Also international, Select USA, which is the US Department of Commerce's annual event where they bring in foreign direct investment from all over the United States. We attended with our partners in Pinellas and Hillsborough under the Global Tampa Bay, met with probably 130 different companies while we were there. And then Foreign Direct Investment Mission to the UK. And you'll see a picture of our chair, Commissioner Starky there. This was a foreign direct investment mission, our second one to the UK with the group. And we've, we are now so full with appointments that we had to break into several tracks to be able to meet with the companies that wanted to come here. So as mentioned before, we've got three so far that have come from the UK. Export Counseling Sessions, still helping the companies find new markets abroad. So that's to make our pie bigger, help our companies sell their stuff somewhere else, not just here. The One Trade Mission we mentioned, and that was Mexico City and UK. And then trade-related events are some of those educational events that we do throughout the year. I mentioned the awards that we got through our enhanced marketing. We're going to continue to do testimonials from our Smart Start Program. Nothing better than seeing our locals, be able to talk about the success that they're having with their businesses. And then Workforce Connect, we had a Pasco 50 that was a packed house. Over 50 employers were there to be able to share their best practices and challenges that they were having with everything from hiring practices to transportation. I heard Commissioner Waitman talking earlier. Those are the types of things that we get an inside glimpse of the companies and how they're doing. And then our annual report, Employer Report, was released also during this last quarter. We do that in conjunction with Career Source. And then Smart Start was all over the place. We saw that they were at several different expos at CTE. Again, Smart Start's our incubator program and our entrepreneur program. We had our microloan luncheon where we were actually, or breakfast, we're looking to attract more investment into that microloan program. And then we had seven companies in the most recent cohort for Co-Starters, which are graduating Thursday at, at the Grove in Wesley Chapel. I'm sorry. Thursday will be at Holiday at the AM Skills location. So far this year with Smart Start, we've had over 200 counseling sessions to 368 participants in 51 events. We have 51 incubator members. That's amongst the three different locations, and we've given out three microloans totaling And then that's the team. I think, I talked about Co-Starters. I talked about the awards that we received. I think probably the most important thing, though, is to get the word out that they know these programs exist and that they're, they are not just for companies moving in, but for existing companies so that we can continue to be the premier county that we heard about earlier. So with that, I'll stop and see if you all have any questions.
I, I heard through the grapevine about an award at IEDC, but you didn't mention it. So I was kind of digging here to, because we're about to put it in the letter. I'm going to hopefully have this board sign on to and send it to Tallahassee. So are you not allowed to say that?
There might be one coming soon in September.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think it's on their website. So can you?
Oh, that might be last year's award.
No, 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 it's this year in September.
Yeah, yeah, September.
For AM Skills.
For our award?
So Derek and someone from AM Skills applied for an award at IEDC, and we won the Silver Award.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So maybe you didn't know. Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be officially announced, we'll pretend we didn't hear it, in September.
Okay, pretend you didn't hear that, but it is in this letter, which is pretty cool. It's a national award, if not international award.
Yeah, it's our, it's our accreditation agency is the IEDC that, for all the economic development agencies in the world. So we've got a couple coming for us, one for AM Skills. So I think Pasco's going to shine really well nationally.
Pretty cool. Any other questions?
I'd like to comment. I want to say Dan Mitchell's been out at the Pasco Music, Scarlet Music Fest, and Chef Dre, again, is out there this year. And what a job he's done. He shows up every time, great smile on his face, sets up his whole program, lets it all, puts a nice spread out. And he started working with the Point D'Sturios doing their samples.
Oh, nice.
So they're taking his Jamaican jerk sauce with the spice rum as one of the dishes, and it's phenomenal. And he's cooking out of a grill right in front of everybody, so he's kind of like face-to-face with them, which is awesome. Got his business cards out there. Cooks face-to-face out of the grill and the wok, lays out a great spread, but he's done a phenomenal job every step of the way. And I will tell you, he makes the best shrimp cocktail I've ever had.
So if you don't know who he is.
Incredible job he's doing.
He went through the incubation program at, in Date City, and he runs the restaurant at St. Leo in the student hall or whatever that's called.
Oh, no, different, different. That's Dave. That's, that's John's gourmet. This is Doc, this is Chef Dre.
Chef Dre, yes.
Who also went through the program, too.
Okay, I've had his food, and it's, I don't know where I had it. Was he at your awards dinner last year?
Chef Dre's at a number of different events. He, if you recall, we had the open house each year at the Stalling Center where they, they have their, all their different samples out there, so that might have been it.
Trying to think where I had the food. So does he cater?
Yes, and he caters. But I love the, the collaboration story of taking one of our existing businesses and working together.
Yeah, well, I'm.
And there's one more weekend of, of Scarlet Fest this, this weekend, so you still have a chance to get out there and.
Yeah. We actually made it available. We had, we got a few, few food trucks there, but we made a really nice dish for people to get for like six bucks, so they get a taste of everything on there, and it's phenomenal. And people have been raving about it, just coming back, thanking us, et cetera. So he's getting, getting a lot of great exposure, getting to see the people, and he's, he's just such a great man to work with.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to talk to you later about having him at an AM Skills.
Awesome, okay.
Because, you know, we should help, help our new local businesses grow. Any other questions for Mr. Cronin?
Getting hungry.
Okay, all right.
Thank you again for all you did.
Okay, so now we have the consent agenda, and I had pulled C13, but I'm not pulling it anymore because I got my answer, Jack, about the sidewalk going all the way around, but we'll, we'll get it done eventually. So I have C25 pulled by Commissioner Oakley, Commissioner Waitman, C26, pull and discuss. Oakley, C29. Did anyone get the number that I wanted on the Pasco Housing Authority? All right, whatever number that is, we'll, we'll pull that one last. Sorry, I haven't had time to look it up here. So we'll go to C25, Commissioner Oakley.
Yep.
Oh, well, I guess we vote on the rest of the consent.
Yeah, let's, let's find out which one we're going to pull. Your other one, though, the Housing Authority.
What?
You want to make sure, we want to make sure you pull that Housing Authority, whatever.
I think that's under the CDVG item, which is what Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's pulled.
That's good.
Okay.
So move approval of the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Oakley.
Okay, I pull this item, deals with All Children's Hospital. Is there someone here to speak? From the department? Maybe Paula? Yeah. The fact of this, the new All Children's Hospital in my district out here at Overpass Road, they want the, and this is about the services that they provide for children and those that do not qualify for Medicare or Medicaid, and those issues, they're able to treat them at this facility just as they do in the facility over in St. Pete. So that's what this is about.
Full disclosure, I am a board member now of John Hopkins All Children's. I, but that doesn't preclude me from voting on anything, right?
So long as you're a non-compensated.
Yes, it's all free.
Board member of a not-for-profit, you're fine.
I got a $25 gift certificate to the, to the gift shop.
So I move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, wait, this is, this is the CDVG one?
No.
No, okay.
This is.
Okay, aye.
Twenty-five.
All right, so that one passed.
Do we vote?
We did. C26.
Right, ma'am.
You wanna do that one again?
We need to clarify that one.
Okay, call, I'll accept a motion for C-25.
So I made motion, sefted the second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay, that was a little clear. C-26, here's the one, yeah. Who's speaking on this one?
I just have general.
Okay.
So, C, I pulled C-26 just with, 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 for, for a number of reasons. I think with, with the new Doge program that's coming down and it's vigor, um, it's, it's important that we know for each, each one of the applicants that we, that we understand all the public funding streams from every level of government that the agencies who apply for funding get. And that way we understand, you know, if they're, if they're coming, whether they, diff, the different grant streams that the county provides or the Fed or the state. It's important that we know how much, how many potential dollars each organization gets in public, public funding streams. And also things important that we, to know that, and we have a checklist, that every one of the applicants that apply for funding have all their appropriate state licenses and credentials that they need, that they have, um, in order to take these funds. So it's just, just a added step of, of fiscal clarity. I'd like to, I'd like to see as we go and we approve different funds, and the same thing goes to opioid funding and any, any funding that we, we approve with these type of, type of programs and similarities. And so I think it'd be important that the board see kind of how everybody's funded and that way we know what we're approving and why. So with that, I don't have any, any other issues.
Can I add something to Commissioner's remarks on that?
And then I'm gonna say something.
I brought Mary up here to kinda talk, she can talk a little bit very briefly about sort of the accountability processes that we use with, with these particular types of public funds. I think she can give us a tune and feel on how that, on how that works. Before she does that though, I hear exactly what the Commissioner, Commissioner is saying. I think in, in light of a lot of things too, that additional transparency and accountability is important. So, I would like to sit down and kinda talk with the team going through a couple of the items here that, that you've brought up, Commissioner. And we can kinda look at ensuring that, um, we've, we've got these elements in our policies and processes.
So to be clear, before these funds are dispersed, this is just to approve the list, this isn't to disperse funds. So we go through and we do a, do a credit check on all, all the organizations. We don't necessarily have to disperse funds or we can modify the dollar amount depending on funding streams, couldn't we?
Uh, we, so I guess I could ask the board this question, would, would the board be more comfortable if I brought these contracts back? This, this current board agenda item authorizes me to execute those contracts. Uh, we've ebbed and flowed on this very issue. In the past, we've brought all of them before the board to, to approve the contracts when they're, when they're done. We can certainly go through that step and do some vetting if, if, if the board would, would like. And we can bring those items back to the board at a future board date when those contracts are ready to come through. I'm, I'm perfectly fine doing that if, if the board wants to, wants to do that.
I'd like to see it. I've heard other commissioners talking about concerns with CBD.
Yeah, remember, you're supposed to have that turned off.
Um, with funds, so I'd, I'd be curious.
That's perfectly fine. And in the meantime, you know, looking at our, our processes that we can shore up, I've, I've spoken with our community development folks and making sure that, hey, we can, we can check on a few additional items. And Mary will talk about some of the audits that we already do on that, but listen, we can, we can always add belts and suspenders to the program. So I'm perfectly, perfectly fine and a champion of making sure that we're transparent and accountable with these public funds.
For me, looking at the list, I know most of these organizations, though, you know, there's, I guess, who, this mobile home repair program, I have no idea who administers, administers that.
Our department does, Mary Thier Young, Interim Director of Community Development. That is a program that we run in our department, cause we saw a need that we could not use our ship funds for older mobile homes. So these are mobile homes that need a roof or an AC.
And I'm fine with that, those are-
And so we administer that program internally.
And then, um, CHIPS with the Z, I, I don't know who that is.
They are a relatively new agency out in East Pasco. We made a concerted effort to get more agencies out on the east side to provide more services out there. That's why they did get a lower grant than what they applied for. And that's where we're trying to expand capacity out on the east side.
Okay, and the reason, I wanted to bring up something here, I don't remember, um, what the money's going to for the, the, the Pasco County Housing Authority. What is that two forty, two hundred and forty thousand for, do you remember?
We don't have anything for the Pasco County Housing Authority this year.
I see it right here, it says-
That was a last year's award through Home and that was a development of a, um, single-family home on Jason Drive.
This says fiscal year 2026, list of projects to be funded, two hundred and forty thousand, wait, where'd it go? Uh, two hundred and forty thousand to the Pasco County Housing Authority. And the, the only reason I bring this up is, and I know that there are legally some things we have to do with them. And, um, but I have brought this up before and I brought this up nationally at my CEWD meeting. Um, I, I, we keep having this issue where we're, where other people are coming and taking our citizens vouchers. So, I was really shocked to see an ad on TV a couple of weeks ago that said, "Come to Pasco County and get on our list for our housing vouchers." That went out to the world, I guess. So, I, I was shocked when we have our own citizens who have needs. Why would we be advertising for other counties to send their people who need public assistance to get on our list? So I talked to Kathy and I did have a brief conversation with David Lambert. And, uh, they are required, I went and looked it up by statute or whatever their word is, to advertise. But I sure don't wanna see them advertising like that. Have you ever seen a commercial from another county in some state to say, "Come move to Pas-, to your, to our county and get on our housing list?" So, and here, and here's why I have some objection to this. Um, if someone comes here, my understanding is the way this works, someone comes here, well, they don't even have to be living here when they get on the list. They have to come for an interview, this is how it used to be. Uh, they, they pass the interview and they get one of our vouchers, they have to live in that house for a year. And then, they can take that voucher and they can transport it anywhere in the country that will accept it. But, let's say they wanna go to Connecticut, California, New York, we have to pay the difference in the rent. Um, our, our housing authority, not the county, the housing authority has to pay that. So, I mean, it's not an organization that we run, I just, I did ask them to make sure that it's lo-, you can say local residents first, but why would we? I just don't understand how that's being run, just, and I see someone's here to speak.
Jeff Scarlet, the Executive Director of the Pasco County Housing Authority will speak on their voucher program.
Uh, good morning commissioners. Uh, first of all, we don't run any TV ads. Uh, we, we, you probably saw a news report, but there are no TV ads that we run.
Yes, yes, it was a news reporter.
Alright, so just to be clear, there are no TV ads run from the agency.
Okay.
Uh, we do by regulation have to put something in the paper, a notice that we're opening the, uh, the waitlist. And so, we can't violate the fair housing laws, we have to open it up to everybody, so anybody can apply.
But you can have a local resident-
We have a local preference, we do have that.
Local preference, yeah.
But you have to be on the list first and then you get the local preference and you would go to the top of the list. So all Pasco County residents will be on the top of the list. And then whoever else out of our jurisdiction would be down at the bottom.
So you just had the misfortune of a TV station picking up your little ad and wanting to do a story on it?
Again, it's not an ad, it was a TV spot, the, the-
On your ad, cause how else would-
No, that's actually in the, I think it was WTBS came up and we did a little quick, short interview to help spread the word that the waitlist was open.
To anyone in the whole United States?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Legal, legal US citizen.
I got a problem with that. Commissioner Mariano?
Yeah, why would you wanna do a radio spot or a TV spot like that?
Well, I thought it would be helpful to get the word out, um, but now I've learned a lesson that, uh, we'll not do that in the future. Um, but, uh, yeah, so it was just basically to get the word out throughout the county.
So let me do a follow-up. In the years past, how many people from outside the county have gotten on this list and get qualified and get a voucher?
Um, it usually runs about sixty, forty split, sixty, sixty Pasco, forty otherwise, but-
No.
No. I don't, but I don't think, we don't control their-
You can't, it, it's a federally funded program. And if I, if I discriminate for just Pasco people, I'm, the agency's gonna get sued and that, that won't work.
Uh, uh, go ahead, uh, wait, Commissioner Mariano, then Commissioner Waitman, yeah.
So, if it's sixty, forty split, you got two hundred and forty thousand, if the amount's cut down in half, would that pretty much take out all the other people from outside the county?
Well, I don't know what they're doing with that two forty.
What's going with forty thousand, we're talking?
The two hundred and forty thousand allocation is to make accessible showers to two of their properties. That is what that is, to convert showers to ADA accessible showers.
It reminded me that I wanted to speak about this.
So, let's, let's talk about that. So tell me about these showers, cause I know we allocated some other monies or in years past, but tell me what those showers are exactly doing.
Yeah, so right now in our, this is only for elderly communities and right now they have a step-in tub. And we're having a lot of the, uh, elder, the tenants complain that it's harder to get in and out of the tub without falling and getting hurt. So, uh, with the money that you guys are hopefully, that you are gonna give us, is, um, gonna convert those, um, to walk-ins. So that they don't have to step over anything.
I don't know, but do you not, do we not have enough need of our own that we have to invite other people who need public assistance to move here?
I'm, I'm not allowed to discriminate from location.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to discriminate, but I have never seen another county do advertisements to move to their county and get on their list. And this is like the third time I've brought this up with you guys, because I recall reading an article in the newspaper that there was a woman in Hillsborough County who was living in a motel waiting for a Pasco County voucher to open up for her. So in doing a little more research, I learned that there's companies who look for counties like ours to place their clients. Because other counties don't do it, I guess, like we do. And so, they literally place them and then sometimes those people sublet those houses. So, I think there's work to be done federally on this issue.
Agreed.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, so, it's open enrollment all year long, there's not a deadline?
No, sir, it's only open, uh, we have it open for three days in May.
So, I, I think it would be appropriate, we wanna put Pasco folks first, that we utilize our own PIO, message it how we want to attention Pasco residents. Hey, here's an opportunity for you, maybe partner with the different constitucionals who do their messaging, um, and kind of embark on a more localized PR campaign that we can do. That's aside from the rules that they have to follow to try to get it out, the word out there for our, our folks who are here to, to receive services. Maybe that's the loophole.
Yeah, and it's also, in, in, to go further in that, we already have to put the ad in and unfortunately, the only paper that's still local, uh, is Tampa Bay Times. So whoever gets that can see, but it's also in this, you know, it's a small report.
Does the Sun Coast News count or the?
Um, I'd have to check the regs on that. Um, but we do go out first, we let all of our local community partners know. Um, Saint Vincent Paul, One Community Now, all the folks that are part of the team of care, so that they can focus the, their people that they work with to go on and register on the website. But again, we also have to advertise on our website, which is can be seen from wherever.
And I wanna be clear, I'm not, I don't, I'm not discriminating against people who have needs. I have a sister who's living in public, with public assistance kind of in Miami. But, do I wanna advertise in Miami, come up and get on our list? No, I wanna serve our residents and our needs, you know, and let that county serve their needs. So, first, for sure, Commissioner, did you want?
I'm just gonna say, I, I just find it staggering that it's sixty, forty split. And we've gotta go really look at that, I think we should have a presentation come back before the board to go find out. I know, but I just wanna see how it happens. I wanna, I wanna, I want this whole thing explained to us just that way, cause you've, you've opened up a, a, a very big problem to me that we, there's probably a way to fix it, cause I gotta tell ya, I gotta think we could fill out every one of the vouchers with people living right here.
I think we go to Rubio and Scott.
We've had enough, enough people driven from all over, even I've seen them advertise up on Carolina, New York, where they're bussing people down here to go maybe get these vouchers. And they stay here and they become our burden.
There's companies that do that.
And that's, and I, I've just seen it.
Again, there's only three days that the waitlist is open that you can apply for. That's the only time it was open for, and that usually gives us a list of people to run for about eighteen months. And then, once it gets down, we'll open it up again. So, it, it only happens very infrequently, it's only open for three days and so we get, we get.
But you have a sixty, forty split, that's shocking, Lily.
Can I say something?
Yeah, come on, say it again.
I've been waiting patiently. Okay, Juan, you answered my questions about the nonprofits, just making sure that they know. Two, I agree with my other commissioners that we need to tap into our, our, our officials and see if they can, you know, get this tweaked. Because the, the sixty, forty split is, I can't, I can't even fathom that. Like two nights ago, we had a seventy-year-old man, his head was so sunburnt and welled over and he had nowhere to go. And we're on the phone at ten-thirty at night trying to see if a shelter would take him. Like this is crazy to me. We just had a dad and a little girl living in their, in their truck. Like, I understand this is for seniors, but like, there is so much need.
No, it's for, it's for, anybody.
There's so much need in Pasco County, for seven months they lived in a truck. Let that sink in.
Oh, I get, I get emails daily with people just like that. So, I, I'm sympathetic to you guys getting calls and emails as well, so I, cause I get them all the time.
And I also agree with Commissioner Starkey, if the Sun Coast News counts, I say the Sun Coast News. I, I don't think we, I think you do, you know, to check the boxes, what you, you need to do. Um, but definitely, we don't want people, you know, we want our Pasco citizens to have, have the first chance at this.
Commissioners, if we may, um, and if you're agreeable with this, we would like to present this, uh, policy to you during the next upcoming homelessness workshop. Uh, that way we can have an opportunity to discuss this.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think it should be at the next meeting, period.
When is your next homeless?
I mean, we've got, we've got people from Hurricanes, how many, how many times in trailers did you see like, live in terrible conditions, walking through floors?
Guys, you, you have to understand, this is a federal thing. It's not, it's not, we don't control that.
But I think we need to talk to our delegation.
We need to talk to our delegation.
I think before we, we-
Well, we-
It needs to be done ASAP in my opinion.
I, it's, our state delegation can't even do anything about this. I'm telling you, this is a federal thing. I've looked into this and I've, yeah.
Madam Chair, to answer your question, October is when that would, is currently ten to-
Um, why don't we put this on a commissioner item for discussion, I mean, an R item? Well, you know, there's really nothing he can-
I mean, I-
We have, we can, we can cut funds from us to them, um, but is that really helping the citizens that need, you know, a shower?
I, I think we need to see it next meeting. Next meeting, they should have enough time to put it together, what they've done, what we can look at. And then we can go look at, okay, do we need to get our, what federal delegation people need to do, what strategies can we do? How do we promote it better? Because there's just no way sixty percent is the only number we should be getting for our people. I, I just, we could fill that up in a minute. I mean, you go to the rope center, probably fill it up with forty people right there.
Can you email us everything about the organization, all the commissioners, so we can start reaching out to our delegation?
Certainly.
Cause I'm definitely in the-
Madam Chair. I just wanna provide the board with some-
Okay, Carbala and Steinsteiner, let's, Steinsteiner go first and then, yeah.
So, just so that I'm clear, the funding request that's before the board today is to improve buildings in Pasco County that the Housing Authority runs. It is not, it doesn't re, it's your existing tenants, it is not people that are-
Which forty percent are not Pasco resi, weren't Pasco residents, but whatever.
Well, they're Pasco residents now, cause they're, they're in their building.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, alright, so-
I agree, there's a, I'm, I understand the commission's concern with the bigger issue, I, I just, the-
Yeah, clarifying what's on today.
The funding request that is before you is-
And I'm gonna vote to approve that, but Commissioner Carbala?
Thank you, so, um-
I mean, county administrator.
So the, um, just two options, we can either bring that back as a regular item at your August nineteenth meeting. I, I haven't seen the agenda yet, so I don't know how packed it's gonna be or how much debate you wanna give this. The August twelfth workshop, uh, I was actually going to cancel it because it was on immobility fees. But staff have, need to go back and do a little more work with the consultants, so I was going to cancel that workshop. I can put this in its place since it's already on your calendars, but I'll, the pleasure of the board, either the nineteenth or the twelfth in a workshop format, which would afford you more time to have discussion.
When's August twelfth, next week?
It's next week.
I, I won't be here.
Okay.
I'll be looking for lobster.
So if, if not, we can bring it back as an R item on August nineteenth, as Commissioner Mariano suggested to present, uh, the current state of play on vouchers and housing.
Well, let's go, go-
How many, how many grants do we give out of the sixty, forty? What is the total?
So the, the sixty, forty is the split of people who are Pasco residents versus non-Pasco residents that'll be on the waiting list.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with funds. And currently, we, that, uh, our check run for paying landlords is around one point eight, one point nine million dollars a month.
A month. So, why do, do we have any Pasco- So, why do, do we have any Pasco residents on that list?
Yes.
So, why do we have forty percent of non-Pasco residents housed?
Because they were allowed to apply.
But I thought we had a local options first rule.
You do. So, let's say, of the, of the.
I guess this is stuff for the workshop.
One thousand one hundred and twenty-four people on the list, like, about five hundred are from Pasco.
We have lots of questions that we would love to go over.
To be continued.
Yeah.
So, I have no idea what's an R thing, what's an R?
Oh, so, I'll explain it to you. But thank you very much, I know we put you on the hot seat. Okay, so, we need to vote on C twenty-six?
Does the board want to hear anything as far as the audit process? That's why I brought Mary up.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, when an agency's awarded, we don't just give them the funds, they, everything that they get is reimbursement. So, they put in for a reimbursement request, we have to review all the documents that they submit to make sure that they are adhering to the contract, and that everything that they are doing is an eligible expense. On top of that, every three months, through our system, they have to do a quarterly report, they have to tell us how many people they've served, a lot of demographic information and everything like that. At the end of the program, we need to get all beneficiary data for everyone that was served through that program. That's the only way that we close it out in IDIS, which is our federal reporting. That's where we get the funds for. So, we don't just arbitrarily give them the funds and hope that they are doing, we have a lot of checks and balances. Once they are complete, if they are development projects, we monitor them every three years, if they get their own single audit, or every year if they do not. We go out there to make sure that they are still compliant with what they were awarded for, and they are still serving the citizens that they were awarded to serve.
So, I think, you know, they have a committee that goes over this, they have, I feel pretty confident that we have a very well-run organization up here.
Are we discussing giving them the funding, like, this is?
For the showers, yeah, to fix the showers in their buildings.
To be clear, this is just approving the list that we send to HUD. HUD will then approve it, that sends the money to us, and then, the actual contracts for disbursement, what I heard the board say here is that you'd be more comfortable with me bringing those contracts back to you as we get them and approve them, versus me signing them, which is perfectly fine.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable awarding any money until I hear more about everything. That's just my opinion, so.
Okay, we'll drop back and do a little bit, do a little bit more, and as I mentioned before, with Commissioner Waitman's comments, there are some elements that we can add to our policies and processes before we award, that, you know, I've talked with Chuck and Mary and Kathy Pearson about, that I think are some good ideas, in making some adoptions in our policies to kind of ensure additional transparency and accountability.
Commissioner Mariano?
Is there any harm in continuing those two weeks?
Yes, I need, I need the list approved, so we can submit it to HUD by August sixteen.
All right, move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, C twenty-nine.
You want to call for a pose?
Probably you may want to.
No, I watched everybody else, I died.
Okay. Okay, this next item is about the Tampa Bay water and Florida friendly landscaping. It's no cost to us, but we work together with them, same as we do with Southwest Florida Water Management, to do broader friendly landscaping. There's no cost to us whatsoever. I just wanted to bring it forward and make mention of it.
Yeah, it's a great program.
And we've been doing that program a long time, and there is a great savings of water throughout the district for the things we do. Yeah, so I move approval.
Thanks.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Okay, we are on to our, okay, I have, okay, I guess, for on the commissioner items, but I had someone, I had, is David Engel sitting here? I had, David was going to do a presentation real quick, do you guys mind if I pull him up now?
Yeah, we only have ten minutes.
Okay, yeah, David, let's get that done now.
Okay. Morning, Commissioners, David Engel, Pasco County's Planning and Economic Development Director. Today, I'd like to give you just a brief overview, I had the privilege of attending the Congress of New Urbanism Providence, Rhode Island event that took place in June. But I just wanted to note how important this conference is to me. It was a real privilege to get extricated over the day-to-day activities we have here in Pasco County, and to be in a environment where I'm totally absorbed through urban design, good planning, and, you know, when I got involved in new urbanism, which was about two thousand eighteen, I was kind of resistant at first, I thought it was a bunch of, you know, kind of groupie type of folks, but at the CNU, there's a confluence of so many different people there. You have architects, you have planners, you have elected officials. In fact, the elected official participation is coveted at the CNU. They have their special group, they focus on implementation issues for good community planning, and it's a very engaging process. And one of the biggest things about the CNU is, we're not sequestered in seminar rooms for eight or nine hours a day, you have that, but you can physically go out across the country when they have these keynote annual conferences, and visit actual developments, talk to the developers, and understand how better design can be integrated into the community development process. So, the first slide, real quick, it's a lot of jargon here, but what is new urbanism? It's restorative, it's folk, and it's purely, really Americana. What works in America? What were the things that bound communities together and made places special? And that's what new urbanism is all about. Of course, it's embraced overseas now, but it's primarily an American solution to land development. And it focuses on redevelopment, but it also focuses on greenfield development. So, it covers all the things that we do here in Pasco, and as we go through the slideshow, you'll see that we've already embraced many things that are in the new urbanism vocabulary and handbook. So, the next item here is really Maspee Commons, it's out in Massachusetts. Last year, we visited Norton Commons out in Kentucky, and this is a new urbanism development, and we talk about transect development. And if you know about transects, it was developed by highway engineers, starting in rural areas, having cross-sections for rural roads, suburban, and then urban. But the transect is very critical to design, and you see in this land plan here, which is an MPUD, we approve and the board reviews MPUDs all the time, it's not just boxes of uses. We have a town center, we have transitional uses, and we have edge development in that, and you can draw transects three hundred and sixty degrees from the town center, and that's really how the transect is relevant here in the county.
And this started out as a strip mall, by the way. Maspee Commons was a strip mall.
And the next slide, and forgive it, this is, these are slides taken off my iPhone, you can see how a brand-new development embraces traditional design, it has common areas for people gathering points, but the design is unique to Americana. And of course, a lot of this stuff is brick faceted, because it's up in New England, but we have also designs that are similar in our county that we could duplicate. The next slide is just another Maspee Commons street, you can see there's, this is during the week, it's, you know, but people are walking down the street, it's very walkable. Your whole, your whole experience is based on the human being, not, and you know, when you go into housing, when we deal with housing, most of our housing developments are focused on the big kitchen, the family room, and those type of amenities.
And the car.
But right now, the housing market is driven by new urbanism principles, because walkability and design, and the fifteen-minute access to activities and services, is what's defining the Gen Y, that's the millennial generation, and they're driving the housing market today. And also, walkability and good design enhances value, not only for the homeowners, but also for the revenue of a community. And here, here's just, you know, the town center and different shots and variations in Maspee, and you can see, it's all about gathering human contact and creating relationships within a community. Now, new urbanism has a lot of features that we could employ here in the county. One of the things that new urbanism has done, and Commissioner Starky and I visited two projects, two cottage projects, where they have higher density, you know, it's like a rez six, rez nine type of development, but it's integrated into a common courtyard. And you notice, this is attainable market housing, this is not high-end housing, but each home has a distinct private space, but it aligns with the community. Everyone has a porch, everybody is enjoying their relationships, but we also enure some privacy here. This is an interesting project, because I got an opportunity to test out pervious pavement, it's been around for years, but I went out into the parking lot, and I took a bottle of water, poured it on regular pavement, then pervious, and one minute, the water disappeared. Right in New England, they don't have, you know, the frost action and the freezing, it just basically percolates in the ground.
Can I say that this was an auto repair shop?
Okay.
I mean, look at the taxable value that you sweat, that you get, when, before you had a strip mall, and now you have a downtown, townhomes, apartments, we didn't, we didn't show those pictures, but this was an auto repair shop.
So, the cottage style is evident in a lot of different housing product. This one is a high-end product, where you had five, six-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, very similar format. Commissioner Starky and I ate at their, or we had a meeting right in there, in their kiosk there, where they have outdoor food preparation area, and it's a lovely development, and it integrates well in any area of development.
And can I say, the lots are, they're very close to each other, but look how lovely it is.
Yeah, I was going to get to that in a second.
Yeah.
And this is the cottage style in the rural context, so, when you can imagine, you know, as we develop our more rural communities, and we use, hopefully, we will promulgate some subdivisions that embrace clustering and also preserving open space, you know, the rural type of subdivision. This is a rural cottage-style development, so it's integratable everywhere. We don't have to have barracks anymore here in the county, we have a lot of opportunities to create wonderful developments. And one thing I've really noted is, the developers of new urbanism are quite different than what we experience typically here in the county. These are long-haul developers, they realize that taking your time and doing things right enure value, and they make more money in the long game. And, you know, we also, we have that right now with the porters over at Wiregrass, Beat Cali over at Avalon Park, these folks are in for the long haul, and we're producing value here in good design in the county. Now, I have driven up and down our corridors, I know the board is, and I know our homeowners and residents are pretty overwhelmed by multifamily development, but multifamily development doesn't have to be rectangular boxes, and then, this product was pretty novel, there was an architectural group up in Rhode Island that proffers this. Rather than having, you know, stacked flats all over the place, this is a mixed-use residential building, where we have townhouses in the middle, and we have eight apartment units on the ends or nine, and it breaks up the roof lines, and it makes it more attractive. And I've seen this type of application now out in the, you know, in the development area, and it's, and people like to live here, so this is a little bit different, and a little bit of a variation, but something we could be proud of and use here. Okay, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. And this slide reminds me of Commissioner Mariano, because he's got the eye for detail. Like I said, this conference is for everybody, there's something for everybody. So, here's a unique product here, what they did is, they took the roof runoff into the ground and piped it into tree wells here along the streetscape, rather than just having, you know, a circle with a root, with a root ball in it. It actually creates good irrigation, decreases runoff, and you have better solutions and better sustainability with your street landscaping. And again, what does new urbanism mean for Pasco County? It means more revenue, less services, by actually having net densities at certain core areas, and it allows us to afford our open space, but not have sprawl. And lastly, this is the most important slide I could ever show to you, this is new urbanism Pasco style. This is the first urban building in Avalon Park, and the, I think it was two thousand nineteen, the Board of County Commissioners approved an incentive deal for Avalon Park to vacate traditional suburban housing and employ urban design. And this, this whole thing was an inspirational process for me, it got me interested in new urbanism. Terry Petos and myself, on different occasions, we went out to see Avalon's development, and we fine-tuned it to make it implementable in the county, using the county type of footprint and also design format. By the way, the best Indian butter chicken I've ever had, no national chains in here, they're all individually owned, residents that have businesses here in the county, the restaurants are great, great ice cream, a lot of people walking around, and we're going to have five urban blocks of this development, once this project's complete.
Very exciting.
So, that's really my brief overview, I urge the board, if you have time, it's worthwhile, at least take a shot at the CNU next year in Bentonville.
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 Bentonville, great town, and what they've done in Bentonville is amazing, amazing. Any questions?
No, so, thank you very much, David, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I was going to say, I think we should have a bunch of tree folks, maybe just tell them where we stand.
Yeah, Commissioner Oakley, we're going to go to your commissioner items, and then bring up a quick discussion.
We don't have any time, but I'm not prepared today to speak to the tree item, so, I've got, I've got emails, and I've been on vacation, I've got emails, I'm still looking at, there's a lot of information, there's new stuff they brought up today about historic tree.
All right.
I'd like to look into that before I require the board to vote on something we really don't know much about.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And I wasn't going to look for any vote, I was just going to say that, just to let them know that we are having a specific arborist come out here and look at it independently from all of us, and we'll have a report in a little bit of time. We just don't have it yet, that's all.
Yeah, we've asked facilities to bring back some information off for me, I haven't gotten that, hadn't said to our administrator or them about any of that information, and I don't want to make any kind of vote or.
Oh, no, no, I did, I did, I just wanted to just let them know we're doing that, because I.
Yeah, we are doing that, yeah.
And let me also explain, and I've been harping on the tree canopy for a long time, I think it's getting traction, that we are, well, as y'all know, I'm hoping that, I'd like to see oak trees planted around the whole thing, like it used to be when I first started coming here. And I always say to the commissioners, I always look for the tree to park under, so I can be in the shade, not really in the shade, under a palm tree, but we are working to value our grand trees better, because I know it's really frustrating to see when land gets cleared, that everything goes, and we don't think, we don't think everything has to go. So, we're working to protect the trees better, and that's working through the progress, process, I don't remember where we are, we just raised the cost per inch of a tree, but now, we're working on the more protections of the tree. I was very interested to hear, the Date City has an ordinance that protects trees forty inches or greater that you can't take them down.
That's kind of strange, because a couple, three years ago, and what you've noticed out in front, was next to Seventh Street is the city, actually, I guess, they own those trees on Seventh Street, and they blew down in a storm, I don't know, two or three years ago, and all of a sudden, they're open up, because they cut them off and didn't pay anything back, so, and the stumps are still there.
I wish that we, you know, some counties have the money to have an arborist that goes around and does a tree survey of the whole county, of their counties, and you really know what you have, we don't have that, I think we can do it by GP, G, no, what is it, when you're aerial?
GPS.
Is this GPS? But I think we've taken down a lot of our canopy and not put it back up, but we're, we're working on it to protect those beautiful trees that are, I think, very special to this part of the country, so. Okay, all right, so, with that, we are adjourned for lunch.[1743.12] Um, all right, so with that, uh, we are adjourned for lunch.
and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at seven two seven eight three.
Hey, I'm Kevin Jenkins, water quality supervisor for Pasco County. What you see behind me tends to create a lot of questions for our department. People ask all the time, why are you wasting all that water? Or why is that thing still running? The answer is simple. We're not. What you see happening right here is a state-regulated process called water quality flushing. It happens every day to keep your drinking water safe. Our team is responsible for checking more than one hundred and twenty-two thousand connections all over Pasco County. As you can imagine, it's a daunting task, but it's work we do proudly and take seriously. We service both residential and commercial connections and flush water mains periodically for preventative maintenance. It helps get rid of impurities, sediment, and biologic growth. This work can be done by a team member or by an automatic flushing device known as an AFD. AFDs can flush pipes remotely. So there you have it, and now you know. That's our flushing process in a nutshell. Pasco County works hard to maintain the best water quality. This is just one way we get to that point. To learn more about this and other Pasco County utilities information, please visit our website at mypasco.net.
You see all of that? You know what that is? That's opportunity. You probably.